Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mr. McHale is not here to take the role, so I will take the role. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Mrs. Pardee?
Here.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Sims and Mrs. Cameron?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
They are excused. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I can take notes if you need someone to take notes. I don't know if you're relying on Mr. McHale or Mr. Goff.
Yes, I don't think so. I don't know if we are recording other than having the videography going.
The items are under category four.
The items?
Yeah.
Or all the recording of those? Oh, yes. Oh, thank you. All right, so let me just check these. Rock, Weisman, excused. Weiss. Motion to excuse the absence of Sims, Cameron...
Mrs. Weiss.
Second. All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the revised Exhibit A Ordinance Number 2019-40 authorizing the release of the lien of special assessments relating to certain Cleveland-Kiahoga County Port Authority Special Assessment forward slash Tax Increment Revenue Bonds Series 2001, University Heights, Ohio Public Parking Garage Project, and Cleveland-Kiahoga County Port Authority Subordinate Tax Increment Revenue Bonds Series 2001B, University Heights, Ohio Public Parking Garage Project. This is on emergency. Essentially what this item is, if you look in your packet, there is a memorandum from Susan Drucker, our Economic Development Director. Essentially, we at the last special meeting passed a repeal and release of the lien of the special assessments. The Exhibit A was discovered had some incorrect information on it after going to the county. The information was very close, but there were a couple of discrepancies that we want to clean up for the sake of the record so that there's absolutely no confusion that we are in fact releasing exactly what we intended to release at the last meeting. Also, we have added the asterisk with language that Mike Kenny provided from the county. This is the exact wording filled out at the bottom of Exhibit A. Removing all municipal special assessments, comma, delinquent, and current, comma, on parcels 721-01-001, 721-01-003, and 721-01-147. So, what we are intending to do is pass an emergency revised Exhibit A to Ordinance 2019-40, which we passed at the last special meeting. I would ask that we do that on emergency on that and that we, consistent with our previous vote, go ahead and do that. Is there any questions or further discussion that needs to be added at this juncture? Mr. Weisman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this is something we've already done, but there were some housekeeping or not typographical, some errors in the documents that we used to support our decision. We're just ratifying the same thing with those particular changes.
Well, yeah, I think the information we use to support our decision is generally the same. It's just that the exhibit itself, to be precise as to what exactly we are releasing as to what parcels, this has now been corrected. I think the intent is consistent throughout.
And this information came from the county prosecutor's office and we're working with them?
Well, the county fiscal office.
The county fiscal office.
Yes.
But they're the ultimate party who would be due to these taxes, or the bulk of these taxes anyway.
Well, ultimately, the county isn't being deprived of its tax money towards the school district, North City. This was all money that was intended to service the U.T.I., which ultimately would have gone to bondholders, not for the foreclosure, but for the everything that happened that led to the bondholders themselves actually wanting to do this. And the problem.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Goff.
Very good. Mrs. Pardee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just was wondering, I don't know if I asked this the first time, but what are the three parcels? What is 001? Do you know what area that is?
Mayor, I can speak about it.
Yes, I think I know this, but go ahead.
001 is the main parcel of University Square. It's kind of carved out by the parcels owned by Target and the parcels owned by Macy's. And it also, I believe, incorporates 002, which is primarily the parking garage. And then the last one, which I believe is 014, might be wrong on that exact parcel number.
There's a 003, which I was wondering about. Maybe that's the parking lot?
It might be.
And then 147?
The last one is 147.
147.
147 is the outlot.
Yes, I'm sorry?
The outlots. Those are handful of the strip mall, a couple of strip mall parcels, I believe. One used to be Verizon Store facing Lawrenceville Center.
Good, thank you.
And one they said is 002, might be the 003.
Yeah, I was wondering about 003 since it was added. It wasn't in what we have.
If you give me a moment, I could pull something from the county to double check.
And I believe in what we passed, there was an 003, but the things that were pertaining to 003 were actually pertaining to 001, so we were changing 003 to 001 and then adding back 003.
Okay.
But the parcel is, they were questioning, 721-01-003? That was the question. 001 is, pardon me, University Square, 002 is Macy's, 003 is the parking garage, 004 is one of two parcels by Target.
Okay. 147 is the strip.
And 147 should be, yeah, that one is the strip mall. And I believe we've referenced that as it was previously at the Verizon store and I believe...
Cold Stone.
Yeah, Cold Stone was in that. That's the southern end of the parcel. The northern end of the parcel is the Heemankel.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Pardee. And Mr. Goff, are there any further questions or comments regarding to this item? And if not, is there a motion?
Second.
And it's on emergency, correct?
Not emergency.
Very good. So, we have a motion by Mrs. Weiss on emergency to adopt a second by Mr. Erdl. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, Mrs. Pardee, would you first call the roll on the suspension of rules?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Weissel? Yes? Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And then on the main motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. Kelly, go to watch out. The amendment carries, the revised Exhibit A motion carries. Very good. Next item is Item B, motion for the appointment of three members to the city's Assessment Equalization Board. Mr. Goff, do I speak on this?
Yes. Council, as I had stated in an email that I'd sent out Wednesday, July 17th, but I hope most of you had a chance to see that email. At that point, we had received our first objection to the special assessment process, which was necessitates we hold the Assessment Equalization Board, who sends, receive two others. And with that Assessment Equalization Board, council as the legislative authority is required under the revised code to appoint three members to that commission. And those three members need to be, since the parcels have evolved and assessed incorporate the entire city, need to be freeholders of property owners from outside the city but within the county that are disinterested. And also going along with that would also be Item C on here, where council is to set place and time of the meeting. And off the timeline that we had going, my recommendation in that email back from July 17th was, let me make sure I got the right line here. And I can explain the logic, but the recommendation, the earliest date for the board to meet is August 27th, but at the same time, the board will need to generate a report, make the recommendation to council, the council then hear about the next regular meeting on September 4th. So sometime between Tuesday, August 27th, and some period of time before the August 4th board meeting is when a recommend setting date, date and time for the meeting. Beyond that, I would refer back to you, Lou, for anything, any questions, anything further about it, Mr. Goff, or the mayor, if there's any recommendations you'd like to make before the April Mondays.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goff. Mr. McHale, did you want to add anything about Mr. Goff?
We're not really, I think it was pretty accurate synopsis. The Equalization Board will conduct hearings on complaints. And as Mr. Goff mentioned, we need three members of the Equalization Board who are owners of property in the county outside of the city because they need to be disinterested in assessments on our city.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mrs. Weiss?
Just a question, are all these commercial properties that...
No, these are for all the special assessments for K3 Street Line.
Are those three appeals?
Oh, yeah, three appeals so far. One is Waterstone, adjacent to University Square. Another is John Carroll. And the third one, I believe was commercial property, was read off today, but I actually read it, so I don't remember who it is, but who it was.
Yes, Mr. Weiss, who are they? Who are they?
The three members of the city's Assessment Equalization Board.
Well, we don't know yet. We have to come up with three people.
So that's what my question was, would you like members of council to forward names to you?
That, I certainly would be open to suggestions.
Okay.
The trick here is we want, you know, people who are disinterested and yet will be interested enough in participating in our progress and our process, and they actually will. They do have to be residents of Kiahoga County. They do have to own real property in Kiahoga County. And because the assessments touch on every property owner in University Heights, they ought not, they cannot be a resident of the university. So, finding somebody from a neighboring community who is interested enough in promoting the greater community of this process, but does not actually live here, but is willing to participate in the process, those would be the ideal type of people we should be.
Couldn't we set a deadline of next Monday for getting names to you, or is that too late?
No, it's not too late. Council has to set the date and time of the hearing as well as appoint the members. And we have to give at least five days notice by certified mail to anybody who got it prior to the hearing. So, since the timeline of, we've got a couple of certified letters that have been returned undeliverable, so we're going to have to do one more week of publication in order to finish the service on those properties. That will start next week. And kicking back the timeline of, we have to drag following that, that's how I end up backing into the time period that it looks like August 27th being the earliest date of the meeting. So, you guys can decide at least a week in advance of that. So, you've got a couple weeks.
Okay, good.
And the only thing is that the appointments are, I think, by statute, council appointments.
Yes.
So, council will have to conduct another meeting if they have to appoint tonight.
Sure.
That meeting could be a meeting required to the Equalization Board. Well, it could be a matter of...
But it would be a very short meeting.
Right.
Because if you were to, if council members were to forward names to me and contact information, so we can verify that, yes, they're interested and qualified to do this, then simply having three or more individuals choose and making sure that there is a date bill, that there's appropriate date available, they can do it, then we could need to confirm them.
I guess the other question is, it looks like we'll be meeting on September 3rd, which is the Tuesday. If the Equalization Board is meeting after September 3rd, is that, what's the latest date?
The latest date they can meet?
That they need to meet before.
They need to meet before that meeting.
Because the 3rd, we will need to confirm.
Yeah, we need to accept any recommendation from them as well as then we have to torques the legislation that follow the Equalization Board process that will be happening then.
Okay.
To the letter?
Yes.
Based on the importance and that three is the number, does it make sense to have an alternate or two if we, assuming we have enough names, just in case something happens to someone?
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any reason why we can't have an alternate, as long as we're making sure we specify that the person is an alternate. But I think it makes sense for reaching out to people to, you know, set a hearing date or make sure in advance that if something unexpected should happen, you know, we have the alternative.
All right, so if that being the case, even though we're out of B, but we're kind of discussing N C as well, should we feel a day, date, or a couple of days for which to have this amendment? We are reaching out to potential members. We can let them know at that point that the meeting will be on this date of this. And we will have to double check about the availability of this room, but that being said, you know, it's generally in University Heights, whether it's here, it's the library or some other location, that we can work out as long as we can generally have a date and time.
I mean, if you guys want to set a tentative date, I think you can do that. If you guys wanted to actually do the full motions, say a date and time now, and realize that you're going to have another meeting to confirm the appointments, you could always change the date and time if need be, have that future meeting.
Set a date and time on what?
The Equalization Board itself. Should it be up to them to decide whether they're available on a particular date? Well, it's up, I think the idea is that we are on a tight timeline here, and if we pick a date that we think is appropriate to according with the timeline, then when we approach people, we can say, can you serve on Equalization Board? And by the way, the date that that board will be, will be this date. And if that people are verbal talking.
If you can't make it, you're not getting an admission.
Oh, right.
How many of these hearings will there be?
I believe.
I mean, is it just one hearing forever or once a month for five years? I don't know.
It's, the process, if I'm mistaken, please correct me on this, is they'll hold at least one hearing. They could, if need be, extend the hearing. They'll make a report to council. Council either accepts or rejects the recommendation they make. If council accepts it, we can move forward the process. If council rejects it, we have to appoint another Equalization Board, which we will not have time to do. And in terms of it going on indefinitely, no. Once they survey on the Equalization Board and complete the process, we're good, unless we change rates again at some point in the future and have to do the whole process through the summer over again.
Okay, so their entire lifespan is this particular meeting, which has to occur by a particular time?
Yes.
And how far removed from us does this item be? We're going to give you names, we're going to know the persons, so does that have some type of conflict, you know, with the person?
I think, I don't think so, because the thing is, is that, I think it would, I think it would be a bridge too far to ask us to just appoint names blindly out of the phone book or off the real estate rolls. You know, this is my jury duty, where we just pull a name out of the, out of the spin here, you know, and just say, hey, guess what? You're it, you have to tell me. It's not like that at all, so, you know, I think we all have to, you know, be cognizant that anybody who we would select, it would be somebody who we know professionally would approach this with a, you know, objectively and impartially and be fair. So, knowing them and then knowing that it would be that kind of person, I think we made them appropriate.
Correct.
Okay, well, Mayor?
Yes.
Are we on Item B or Item C?
Well, we're technically on Item B, but maybe we should move to Items C. So, maybe we should table Item B to the next special meeting. Is there a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Pardee, second by Mrs. Weiss. If there's no discussion, Mrs. Pardee, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
So, the motion to table?
Motion to table.
Item B. Aye.
Special meeting, yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. So, that takes us to N C, the motion scheduled, the date and time and place for the Assessment Equalization Board meeting. Mr. Goff, do you have a suggestion, knowing the timeline as to whereabouts this meeting should be?
The timeline needs to be somewhere between Tuesday, August 27th, and prior to our regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd at 7:00 P.M. I mean, if we really wanted to book it, you could probably even do one earlier in the day on the 3rd, but I would recommend something of the last week of August, of Tuesday through, most likely Thursday.
Okay.
The weekends would be an option. I realize we tend to not do meetings on Fridays. That would be an option if we really needed it.
Well, it seems to me the 27th, 28th, or 29th would be a suitable day for having an Equalization Board meeting. Is there any preference here on the council among those three days?
We don't have to show up this week.
No, I don't think you do.
Disinterested residents might show up this week.
Very good.
I think that knocks Friday and Saturday out of the box.
I think that's generally, which is why I said 27th, 28th, or 29th.
We have a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, that's them. So, why not look up Wednesday?
Can we set it for one of those three days?
Or are you saying, saying that, you know, are you saying that we should be flexible and hold all three dates open, then, you know, depending on who we talk to? Is one date tends to be the better date for the people we would approach? Is that what you're getting?
I'm thinking it's possible that some people, we offer this wonderful opportunity to, to serve the residents of the city, don't avail themselves of the opportunity. We have to go down the list. Only one date, that may limit us.
Well, is, Mr. McHale, would it be appropriate if we made a motion that we are selecting the 27th or the alternative, the 28th or the alternative, the 29th for the meeting, and that we firm that up at the next meeting when we nominate the three?
That's fine, as long as, you know, when we meet again, we set a date certain, we can make sure that we're objective, that's the issue with taxpayers, so. So, the five days that we need is just before this board meets, not between that board and the council?
No, it's five, it's five days advance. Certified mail letter asks about five days before the meeting of the Equalization Board.
Yes. Well, Mr. Mayor, I move that we set the Equalization Board date and time and place for that meeting to be either Tuesday, August 27th, Wednesday, August 28th, or Thursday, August 29th at...
6:30.
6:30 P.M. In this room, should it be available, or another room to be announced?
If that would be, you know, I second that motion. Very good. So, motion by Mr. Weisman, very nice, well-stated motion by Mr. Weisman.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Pardee, would you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Weissel? Yes. Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And then, while we did not formally state this, if you would please forward me your nominees by this coming Monday, which is the 29th, names as well as any contact information you can round out for these folks. If you contacted them already, all the better, and then I can vote. All right, next item is Item D, Resolution 2019-41 for the submission of a grant and program application to the Kiahoga County Planting Commission for the Healthy German Tree Canopy Grant Program. Mr. McCray?
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. Welcome, Charles. Kiahoga County Executive Art Budisch has pledged a million dollars a year, up to $5 million over five years for a healthy tree canopy program being planted in the county. And we would like to participate in that. Cities are limited to a maximum of $50,000 each, and that will be $50,000 each year. So, we are looking forward to putting in an application to the county to do some young tree training. Our application will be to train some of the young trees we planted over the last five years, up to 500 of them. We hope to prune them, mulch around them, fertilize them, and hopefully help them to grow quicker into larger trees. That's going to be our application. We're working on that now. It's due January 29th, July 29th.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McCray. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Pardee, we'll start with Mr. Erdl.
It surprises me, I thought he just planted new ones. No.
We've planted many new ones.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so this is going to be tending to all the new ones we planted in the last five years.
Okay, so canopy, in my mind, that is an image of something that's over everything else. Is that not correct?
Well, that is correct. However, when you go through the process of the application, there are more points for getting some of the trees that are already planted to grow into the canopy, as well as planting new trees. Obviously, they're looking at planting a lot of new trees, but one of the point systems in that application does not allow you to use your current program, if you already have funding, which we do, to take the county money and do your regular annual program. So, you have to come up with a different program.
So, the trees that we're going to be modifying, they'll grow tall enough to become a canopy? A lot of those things look like ornamentals.
Many of them are not. They've just been young so far. You'll, you'll, you'll help the growth of the tree by trimming the older branches off, and it will climb better with a central gear.
Yeah, the mulch keeps it moisturized, which is a big problem. So, explain the canopy theory to me. It has to do with oxygen and all that too, doesn't it?
Well, it has to do with, right, collecting sunlight and using it in a growing object, so living a green tree. So, the canopy concept is also to preserve, you know, the area under the trees. But the canopy doesn't include just large oak trees. Shade trees can be quite small and still be included in the canopy. It's a, it's a matter of looking from above as to how much sunlight actually reaches the ground.
Right. Now, if our trees in general, or for the most part, become a canopy type, does that affect the trees left below, you know, that are not quite so high? I mean, all of a sudden, those are in shade?
It does to some effect, some amount. Obviously, a lot of the ornamental trees that grow in woods grow in shade.
Okay.
So, they can, they can survive as well. However, if you're planting, you know, a maple tree underneath an oak tree, it will struggle because they both want, they both want to climb.
So, you've got that all mapped out? You know, which ones you're going to prune and all that sort of thing?
Yes, yeah. We've planted over 600 trees in the last, more than 600 trees in the last five years.
Yeah.
So, we'll be picking out 500 of them to do, probably starting with the ones from five years ago, moving our way towards the newest ones which we won't need again.
Great. And just out of curiosity, another subject, when you're picking out the species of trees that we've been planting over the years, do you take into account resistance to salt from the streets? So many of them seem to be, they just seem to be poisoned, you know, especially the young ones.
We do, but it has more to do with being on the main streets than being on the side streets.
Yeah.
So, yes, if you're along, Lawrenceville, for instance, many of those trees won't So, yes, if you're along, uh, Lawrenceville, for instance, uh, many of those trees won't survive unless you pick, like, an ornamental tree, or a locust tree, or something like that, that is salt tolerant. But yes, we do consider it.
Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Weiss, did you have anything?
Um, no, we've actually answered. If there was to enhance, or actually lower our, our expenses, so, this will enhance
Battle between apples and oranges. Anything further for Mr. Birdie?
I see that there's a 5% match, but at that level, it's negligible. It's not very much money, so.
And money will be available within our, uh, tree fund.
Okay.
Very good. All right, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-41?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Weiss and the second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any further discussion? Same none. Mrs. Birdie, would you call a roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fordy. Uh, ordinance 2019-42, the 2019, uh, permanent appropriations supplement number one, this is additional appropriations for the paving of Washington Grove. Mr. Goff, do you have a fourth?
In anticipation of the bid that we'd have in item 14, um, we need to increase appropriations in order to fund that bidding. Uh, the appropriations, uh, we originally budgeted for the project $500,000. The bid is substantially more than that, so this supplement is just for the difference. Um, at the moment, there is enough anticipated, uh, revenue and carryover fund balance in the, uh, general fund to accommodate these, uh, additional appropriations as is. However, I would like to discuss, uh, funding later on below item G.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Goff. Is there, are there any questions? Mrs. Weiss?
Uh, do we know why the bid was, was so much more?
We have, uh, some theories. Uh, Mr. Feeny, I don't know if you'd like to address that in this forum, or I, I, I can also do that as well, but this is up here. When this is Nick Feeny, JPD, I think most people, most of us know him, and, uh, he's here in place of Mr. Feeny this evening.
So, when we have council bids, we had several contractors, a hundred bid orders list, uh, I believe we had four, four papers on there, and we ended up getting one bid from the Shelley Company. Um, they were reputable contractor. Uh, our belief is that, you know, based on the time of the year and the workload that the contractors have that influence the prices. We did talk with contractors that were on the list that didn't submit proposals, and they had indicated to us that they, they couldn't commit to completing it this year, so they didn't turn in proposals. So, um, both of these streets had waterline. What Washington is in the process of having, having the waterline replaced. So there's extensive base repairs. Uh, the concrete items that we have, uh, in the bid documents, too, we had subcontracted by, by the asphalt papers, and those items, uh, came in a little bit higher than we anticipated them to. The asphalt prices came in great, it was the, uh, subcontracting work that came in a little higher.
Yes. Mrs. Weiss, go ahead.
Were, were the contractors late in, in bidding out to the subcontractors?
No. I bet the bid deadline was, the bid, when did we open bids, um, July 8th, I believe it was?
Yeah.
On July 12th. Weren't aware that anybody was late. Um, you know, the asphalt papers typically get quotes from several contract, concrete contractors, uh, but looking at the prices for the concrete items, uh, it was consistent with the explanations we got from the, uh, papers that did the project. They could line up and get the commitments as soon as they got them.
If I could add to what Mr. Feeny is saying, uh, I also spoke with Joe Chidney, and, and we discussed, uh, possible reasons why, um, the bidding worked out as it did, or why we haven't been one bidder, and, and one very plausible explanation is due to the many days of rain we had, which many contractors are already behind and are trying to catch up with respect to the work that they've already committed to, and thus, in an effort to ensure that they complete the work they had and not take on additional work that they may not be able to complete, they did not bid on this project. Would that be fair?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, uh, oh, Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm, I'm confused. This is the first time we're seeing this winning bid of 688, right?
Sure.
So, the bid, the materials aren't here, the winning bid itself?
Right, I'm, I'm sorry.
We're accepting this bid as the best and lowest bid, and we don't have the bid in front of us.
Eesh.
Right?
Kelly sent that to everyone separately from the rest of the panel.
Got it.
I have a copy of it here.
Wasn't...
Share it, but yes.
Wasn't printed out. So, so, when, what, you, I mean, when, the bid went out July 12th, when did we ask, when did we authorize the bid to go out?
I don't know.
Seems a little late. Usually we bid the, the, the street program, you know, April 8th, or something like that. If we bid it in July, maybe that's why people, maybe they're probably, the work's already set, I'm just trying to figure out why it didn't go out until July 12th.
Well, July 12th is when we open the bids, but still, that would be later in the project.
That's right. When do we approve, when do we approve this to go out?
Mr. Feeny, you don't have to tell them?
No, I, I do not recall. With the work on Washington, with the waterline work, the completion period that we set up in the contract would have been unchanged, um, so Washington would, you know, was going to have to be paid later this season.
The Grove was done.
Correct.
It needs to be done. And why are we paying for Grove to be repaved and not the people who did the water? Is that usually the way it happens?
The Cleveland Water Department in the suburban legal program typically doesn't pay to resurface the streets, even if you had it set up that way. Pay for the resurfacing of the road. They'll pay for the trench off the main, but they won't pay the, pay for the road.
They pay a proportion of which the pipe consists. As I go down, if 33 miles of streets in University Heights, and many of them have a large patch on one side of the road for the entire stretch, we stop side to stop side, so that is a good pay for.
The trench.
So, if we actually, would, if this got pushed off to 2020, would that give us a more favorable bid? Because the timing would be better, and we would be bidding this apartment as well with the program.
Copperheads in both the streets of 2020.
We may, but we will also feel a lot of feedback from residents on these two streets about not completing the pavement this year. I know that that group has been representing to Grove, but originally, the paving was going to be completed last year, and then it was not because of how late that waterline project took. We were, uh, still finishing up, uh, at Thanksgiving, and, and issues, as I recall, even that pipe's freezing because of how late the, uh, the contract had gone started on that waterline program. I also know that Washington Boulevard, uh, residents had an expectation, especially due to reports in the paper, when erroneously the county announced that they would be contributing to this project, and then, uh, discovered that it was not actually eligible for the contribution that they were making. Uh, the, the announcement that the project was eligible, and that they would be contributing a quarter million dollars towards the project was reported in Cleveland.com. No correcting article, of course, appeared, so, uh, it has been something that I have been dealing with, while the various residents would ask about the paving, and know there was in fact no county money going to this, in spite of what we read in the paper.
I just have one more question.
Yes.
What was our budget for this program? For this program?
$550,000 was what was, what was budgeted.
So, the 140 or 139 that we're approving is just over the budget that we had, right? And, uh, this is what I...
Yeah, I think they're so, I, I agree with, with them here in terms of, I mean, we can push it off, and paving those streets. I mean, I drove, I drive over both of them all the time, and they're awful shit, you know. Um, and especially Grove, what happened to them last year. Um, but I think we have to be very cognizant that bids like this cannot go out in July. We already know those streets were paving in January, so, right, I mean, they have to, we, we should never be in this situation.
Oh, we need more, right, we need more.
No, but we would have had four bids, though.
Yeah.
Is it too late to rebid it?
It is not too late to rebid it. We would put it off at least one more month. There's no guarantee that we would get, we don't know what bids we would get. You know, we would, would Shelley bid again? Would another bidder appear? Would the bids be lower, would the bids be higher? We may take any chance. But it is, there is time to rebid it. Who are we to do that? But the result is uncertain.
Mr. Feeny? I'd be in favor if we're asking sure if they can do it now. I think those residents have had it on.
I, I tend to agree, Mr. Feeny, which is why, um, I suggest that we go ahead and put it on the agenda rather than go and rebid it even before bringing it to. So, that is also my, uh, I've spoken with residents on Grove and in Washington last year and this year, and I know how badly Peggy is worried.
I would second that, but to make sure that, that, uh, Mr. Chidney knows what our feelings are in terms of, of making sure that this is a priority in terms of bidding and not waiting until the last minute to do it. I agree with that as well.
Okay, so, for us at this juncture, is the, um, is the letter E, uh, ordinance 2019-42 for the 2019 appropriations supplement number one, is there a motion?
Seven.
Oh, this is in the under, okay. So, there's a motion, and is that on emergency? Mrs. Weiss? Thank you, Mr. Feeny. We have a motion on emergency to adopt by Mrs. Weiss and a second by Mr. Riddle. Is there any further discussion? Same none. Uh, Mrs. Birdie, would you call a roll first on the suspension?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Another major.
Mr.?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Very good, which was just item F, which has been covered somewhat already. Motion to accept bid from the Shelley Company for the 2019 Street Improvement Program has the best, lowest bid, and the entering into contract is the same in the amount not to exceed $688,894.16. Mr. Feeny, anything you appear to have, you have already...
Just that a portion of, uh, Washington is, uh, there's some participation with your neighbor. I suspect only $100,000 of the cost of Washington is being won by your neighbor.
Yes, and we have been in touch with the city of Cleveland Heights with respect to securing their contribution.
That from the over and above from the plant, do, are they slitting in?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's $100,000, um, $150 is their current, uh, contribution. The original claim amount was $75,000. So, yes, they have a, I mean, a portion has been, is being made in this new apartment.
They prove it, right?
Uh, I don't know that their council was formally, I, I understand we had, uh, a conversation with this government of Cleveland Heights indicating that their intention
So it's really $120,000 that are increases to $150,000?
Well, proportions are increased in a portion in sense of being won by them, but as far as, you know, pledging for the entire amount, we still need to pledge for the entire amount of project, even though there will be so many coming in from other cities.
Right, but the heights, oh, great.
Yes.
Oh, we're, we're not, we're not getting $25,000 dollars from the overage back? That's, that's my question.
Well, yes, that would be what they're looking at, because we might speak to them more than they would ever want to. Just as mayor. All right, uh, is there a motion?
Seven.
A motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Riddle, is there any discussion on this Same none.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
The motion is...
The motion is to accept the bid from the Shelley Company for the 2019 Street Program as the best and lowest bid, then entering the contract with the same in the amount not to exceed $688,894.16. So, all doesn't explicitly say it would be authorized immediately in that contract if we had this.
Do we not just vote on this?
They're going to vote on the appropriation.
Right. Okay. That clarification had, is there any further discussion? God, uh, Mrs. Birdie, will you call a roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
So, aye, Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very, very good. Uh, next is item G, uh, discussion and consideration of possible legislation for issues of a general obligation of debt financing of paving of Washington Grove. And before I go, Mr. Goff, I thank Mr. Feeny for, for being here today. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Goff, you now have a call.
Uh, in, in doing part to, um, our, being informed by the county earlier this year, the quarter million dollars that we had thought was eligible as county grant money, as well as the increase out of pocket, uh, due to the higher bidding, uh, last week, began discussions with, um, Dollar Bank, our, our banker, to look at the possibility of then doing a direct, uh, debt issuance by note to us. If they do proceed with the issue, they note to us, uh, there would be legislation later that the company counseled to formally approve it of, but it would be a one-year debt or general obligation, general obligation debt allows us to spend on permanent improvements. So we'd be looking at either pay that off next year, or most likely roll that into a bond of some sort next year to pay it over a long period of time. Uh, at the moment, unless council objects to us even proceeding with looking into it, uh, I know that the discussions the mayor and I've had are to look at getting a, uh, note to help finance the higher costs that we have with this project, and to go ahead and look at financing the full cost of the project. And, um, then bring it back to council later, uh, bring it back to Finance Committee over the summer as we're ready to proceed with that. At this point in time, I was hoping to have more information, uh, but unfortunately, uh, haven't been able to get in contact with them yesterday or today. Last contact was, was last week, providing some financials into that. And at this point, I think we're really just looking to see if there's any appetite from council to proceed with this idea, uh, or if council just wants to say no to giving any kind of debt issuance for this.
You're talking about borrowing money to pay the 688 for the road program?
Yes.
I'll say, I'll say no right away, so, I don't know what else to say.
Maybe it would be one year, uh, loan that would then potentially be rolled into a, uh, a larger bond next year, uh, something we can look at. At this point in time, it is just looking at together information as to the possibility. Uh, more information is probably going to be needed by Dollar Bank, and of course, if there's any appetite for this, we need to go to Finance Committee later this summer with it.
Mrs. Weiss?
We're not completely against any type of debt financing for this. We've had most of it in the budget, and we do have, um, other money in the general fund that we can transfer over. I, this is not a good path to start going on, to start taking on debt.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Is there a plan opposed also? Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
I, I'll agree with my colleagues until we see the forecast, the five-year forecast. We don't want to make any debt obligations until we have a better picture of the future.
I would say by doing this, the debt now, it would give you more flexibility going into longer-term planning, because we're going to retain more fund balances in the city's coffers as is, whereas you would have less options, uh, when we get into more detail with the five-year forecast if this wasn't pursued.
Sure, I understand that, but if years pass, we've had a robust road improvement program, we continue to do that, and I want to continue doing that in the future, and I don't want to roll this year's program into the next year, or the year after, et cetera. Um, we do a very good job of maintaining our roads, um, and we pay for it through the general fund. In fact, just see us continue down that path.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. All right. Here that, at this time, we have exhausted this talk, and we have a little necessary point we did. Uh, actually, we've had a discussion, so, so... That makes sense to me. Very good. Well, then, um, we will leave that there, and, um, on a matter of age, a motion on executive session, if you follow this special council meeting with the purpose of discussing personal legal and real estate matters. I have two real estate matters I would like to discuss briefly in executive session with the council, so, uh, I would ask for a motion, so...
Second.
Very good. Um, there's no discussion. Uh, Mrs. Parry, I believe all the roles, for the record, that Mrs. Parry made the motion, and Mr. Rock is second, and so, Mrs. Parry, will you now take it?
Um, Mr. Rock, parry. Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Erle.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss. Aye.
Very good. Uh, we are now at the, uh, end of the regular agenda, and we can move to executive session. I'd like to thank Mr. Corney, I'd like to thank Mr. Feeny for being here. Uh, we will return, uh, to regular session, uh, most likely for, uh, probably this quarter. I don't even say at this point. We will be returning to the formal session, so, Mr. Cook, if you could wait a day, uh, please make sure that the camera is off at this juncture. Thank you. Okay, any motion to... Yes, is there a motion to resume?
Hold on, I have to turn on the mic live.
Yes.
I make a motion to resume regular session.
Very good. Second motion by John Rock, a second by, uh, by Mark Weisman, by Mr. Weisman, so, uh, Mrs. Parry, will you call who?
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Erle.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss. Aye.
Okay, very good. We are back in the regular session. Is there a motion to resume?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Erle. Uh, Mrs. Parry, will you call who?
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Hi, but, uh, no, I, uh, it's late. Uh, Mr. Erle.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss. Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.